Okay, if the clerk would, we will start the committee of the whole meeting with a roll call.
Okay, City Council members Ammons.
Here.
Brown.
Here.
Hazen.
Here.
Jacobson.
Here.
Miller.
Here.
Roberts.
Here.
Wu.
Here.
Mayor Marlin.
Here.
Okay, approval of the minutes, previous meeting, February 26th of 2018.
I'll move that they be approved.
I'll second.
Okay, Dennis moved that they be approved, and Mary Alice seconded that. Minutes are approved. Do we have any additions to the agenda?
Voice vote.
Oh, I'm sorry, it's been awhile. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Minutes have been approved. Any additions to the agenda? No additions to the agenda. And we see here on public input. Okay, we have, excuse me one second. Bishop King James and Reverend Evelyn Underwood wish to
Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood.
Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood, excuse me, wish to express their continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems, but do not wish to speak, is that correct? Okay, sorry about your name there. We do not have any other public input. Presentations, I believe we have
Look to your right.
No, he is only here if we need him for questions. Oh, I'm sorry, Aaron.
No problem, Dean. I just wanted to make an announcement there, we'll be a pastoral panel forum for the Illinois 13th. This is going to be on March the 16th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., at the First United Methodist Church, 304 South Ray Street in Urbana. This is a pastoral panel, and it presents the Illinois 13th Congress and the black community to discuss with the candidates their proposed policies which would impact the African-American community. There will also be a souls to the polls on Sunday, March the 18th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m. That'll be at the Church of the Living God, at 312 East Bradley Avenue in Champaign, Illinois. And you'll be able to register to vote, to cast votes for the 2018 primaries, and there will be lunch with other congregations. That's going to be Sunday, March the 18th, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., at the Church of the Living God. And lastly, there is a register and vote today, it starts tomorrow. You U.C. students can register and vote at the same time, and so that's going to be taking place all day tomorrow, Tuesday, March 13th, through Friday, the 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., at the Illini Union, Room 213. Again, that's the Illini Union, Room 213. Take the north stairs up to Room 213, Tuesday, March 13th, through Friday, March 16th, from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ammons. Actually, I forgot I had a short statement myself under public presentation. On 2/24 of 2018, officers from the Urbana Police Department stopped a vehicle for a simple Illinois Vehicle Code violation. The vehicle pulled into the Lincoln Lodge parking lot. Ultimately, five people, I believe, were arrested with three handguns and over 30 grams of cannabis, which is a felony. And I just wanted to thank the Urbana Police Department officially for protecting us and doing an excellent job on this. I think the officer that made that stop was Franco Frankenbeans, Frank, Frankamont, Frankamont. So I just wanted to say thank you for that. Okay, we have presentations now, I believe by Mr. Seraphin, is that correct?
It's Willard Airport.
Oh, it's the Willard Airport one. I am not doing well tonight. Okay, come on up, sir.
Hello.
Hello.
Good evening.
This is Mr. Gene Cossey, who's the Director of Willard Airport, and he comes about once a year to give us an update on the airport and let us know what's happening.
Yeah, and I hopefully have a presentation here ready to be seen.
Who's Dad?
We're Dad.
Okay, well, Mayor and City Council, thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come in and speak with you all tonight. Really, this is an update on what's going on at the airport and where we're at on things, and just kind of give you a overview of kind of the key issues that are happening, and then to speak briefly about the value of the airport to the community. I have been warned that I tend to talk a lot, so I'm going to try to keep this short, but I will give you opportunity at the end to give me any questions that you may have about the presentation or about the airport in general. We've had a lot going on at the airport, I'm gonna see if I can make this go forward. We've recently in this year, since the last time I've been able to be before the council, we've had the United Airlines start service out at the airport, which has been very beneficial to us. I think a lot of people have enjoyed United being out there. United is still only doing three flights a day, but all of those have been doing very well. The great news about that is that United's service has just added to what we already have, it hasn't taken anything away from American, so American is still performing very strongly. And we actually, I know that a lot of you saw this, and I'll have another slide about this in a minute, but we had a record year in 2017 over any of the other years we've had since 2007. We also have brought out to the airport Einstein Brothers Bagels, which has been a huge success. It's the first time we've had concessions in the terminal since probably, from what I've heard anecdotally since I've been here, since back around 2000. We haven't had concessions out in the terminal. So now, when you get out there and you want to fly somewhere, you can have your coffee, bagel, salad, they offer a lot of different things. And so it really is enhancing the services that you get out at the airport. We've also launched a new website, and from that website, not only can you get a lot of information about the airport, but you can book your flights directly from our website, and that goes to one of the things I'm gonna ask you guys to make sure you're committed to here towards the end, and that is flying Champaign-Urbana as much as possible. And then, we are just at the cusp of opening a new automated parking system, so that when you do fly out of Champaign-Urbana Airport, you can automate your parking, and you'll be able to get in and out of the parking system much more quickly than you have been able to in the past. We've had some issues with the university's technology folks and wanting to make sure we have all our i's dotted and t's crossed multiple times before we can activate the system, but we're right on the cusp of getting that ready to go. So we're very excited about all the updates that we've had out at the airport and how things are really just growing and expanding. We've got a great staff of people out there who's trying to make it a better airport for all of you. Real quick, just to give you that update on our performance, 2017 was a 10-year record as the most in planements, that's how we really measure our key performance indicator for the commercial aviation side of things, that's how many people get onboard a commercial airline and fly out. We had over 104,000 in planements in 2017. That means probably close to 208,000 total passengers going through the terminal, and then you add the meters and greeters, we have about 300,000 or so people a year hitting our terminal. So we're really excited about the growth that we've been seeing, and a lot of that is due to the additional seats that both United and American have put in the market. In addition to United's service, Americans expanded their service, adding a second flight to Dallas, and keeping some flights seasonally that they normally cancel on a seasonal basis. So we're really excited with the overall performance that they've been doing. If you, I don't know if you can see this slide very well, but what this slide really shows you is all the different places you can get to in one stop on American Airlines. So basically, almost anywhere in the United States, and then all over the rest of the world internationally, one stop in Chicago or Dallas on American Airlines will get you anywhere in the world you want to be. And then likewise, United Airlines has both domestic and international connections all over the world. So really, flying in Champaign-Urbana, you can get anywhere in the world you want to get to, and there's no place that you can't be. One of the things I wanted to focus on when we talked here was the value of the airport to the community. Recently, and relatively recently, in 2012, the Illinois Aeronautics Department completed an economic impact survey for airports around the state, and in 2016, the Economic Development Corporation of Champaign did an economic impact study for Willard Airport. Both of these showed something very valuable, and that is the economic impact that the airport has to the entire county and the entire region. One of the things I want you to think about is when you look at mapping the assets of your community, and that's the Urbana community, the Champaign community, everybody around the county, what are the things that you really need for economic growth? And there's all kinds of things you need for economic growth, but one of those is a robust transportation system that includes a strong airport. The university, other businesses, there's all kinds of things that would not locate and would not be here if we didn't have strong commercial air service. So that growth we're talking about in the air service just helps boost the economic value that we have when we're reaching out to try to grow the economy of the region. So it's very important. If you look at this map on this slide, it shows you all the airports with the little blue circle and the blue airplane, all of those are airports that also have commercial service. As you can see, in Illinois, as strong of a state as Illinois is, there's not a lot outside of the Chicago area that have commercial service. Unfortunately, there's a lot right in the middle of central Illinois that do. So those are the people that we really compete with, and we don't only compete with them when we talk about gaining airline service, but we compete with them when we talk about bringing in economic development into the region. Right now, the Champaign-Urbana area is one of the strongest growing economies, actually it's the only growing economy in the central Illinois area, everybody else is suffering. And so one of the things we want to make sure we're doing out at the airport is being one of those catalysts to growth and being something that's available to help that economic growth continue. So we think the value of the airport to the community is extremely important. This is a slide that maybe isn't real easy to see, and I can make sure anybody who's interested in this data has it. What it really shows is the data that we did on an individual basis. The big graphic on the side shows the number of jobs that the state estimates the airport generates in our region, and that's about 535 jobs with about $102 million impact. What we found out is that the state's study did a footprint that's much larger than just the county, it reached all the way up into Bloomington and all the way down into Springfield. We wanted to narrow that down and get out of their footprint and really focus on what happens in the county. And what we discovered is that there's almost $75 million of impact from the airport into Champaign County, and that's just the direct jobs, direct money that's brought from airport operations, from the businesses like Flightstar that do a tremendous amount of business out at the airport, to the impact from American and United being out there. And it brings probably close to around 480 jobs when we talk just Champaign County. And when you look at the state's study and you go a little bit outside, it's even more of an impact. And that's just the direct impact that the airport brings economically to the community. When you look at the things that would happen if we weren't there, if we weren't a viable, strong airport, the loss that we would have to the university, the loss that we would have to companies that are here because they have, among other things, as the other graphic I had showed, among other things, they have air transportation available to them, it would be a huge impact. So I just really want to focus on that community value that the airport has to everyone who lives here and operates here. Finally, there is a tax revenue benefit, and this is something I'll get into in just a minute about the impact it has towards us operating out there. But all of that economic impact and the $75 million of direct economic impact that the airport has generates significant income to the rest of the state, to the city of Champaign, the city of Urbana, all the different districts that are here. There is an impact of about $5 million that goes into all of the different organizations that get tax revenue. So again, it's an extremely valuable asset that the communities have. One of the things I want to talk about is the challenges that we have out at Willard Airport, being that we are operating under the university, we're limited within the budget that the university allows us and our own revenue that we can generate. And when you compare that to the other airports in central Illinois that we compete with, you go back to that other image that I showed you with the map, with all the blue dots with the other airports, that we're competing with not only for passengers and for commercial service, but we're also competing with for economic growth, for a company that wants to come into a central Illinois area and build businesses and build jobs. We're competing with these other airports, and all of these other airports operate on a tax district. And if you look at this graph, the line in the red on the top shows their tax revenues, and the line on the last side, you see that the only thing we have is really the revenue that we earn directly. So at the end of the day, they get a total revenue from about $8 million to $15 million, and we're working on about 3.7. You look at the overall cost and expenses of operating an airport, we're operating the most efficiently as possible, but because of the hindrance that we have in not operating as a district, we operate with a lot of subsidy having to come from the university, which becomes challenging for us, of course. So we have a lot of challenges as far as making sure that we have a strong competitive airport, and it's one of those things that we're trying to do everything we can to improve the services that we have, but yet we're also operating under these constraints that the other central Illinois airports don't have. So I think it's something, right now, we're just trying to make sure you guys are aware of as a city council in the region, and understand that those things that do kind of tie our hands behind our back when we're trying to operate this, again, what I feel is a community asset for everyone. Finally, what I wanted to say, and then hopefully I haven't talked too long, is to talk about what you can do to help us out. So I'm not here to ask you for money, I'm not here to ask you for anything, this is really just an update, but I am going to ask you to do a couple of things. I'm gonna ask that anytime you have the opportunity to affect a policy that really looks at where people will choose to fly out of, that you choose to ask them to fly out of their hometown airport, Champaign-Urbana Airport, the Willard Airport, it's your hometown airport, it's one of your assets, it's a great value to your community. So we're asking you to make sure that you affect any policy you can, that we're your first choice, that you always try to make this the place where you buy your airline tickets out of, that you travel out of, that you bring people in and out of. And then, think about when we do come to you in the future, if we have opportunities for any incentive programs or promotional partnerships that we might ask the city to jump in and help with, just to remember that this value that the airport brings to the community. And now, I'm ready for any questions you guys might have for me regarding this presentation or anything about the airport, I'm happy to discuss.
Mary Alice, and then Aaron, please.
Can you go back to the slide with about two slides, yeah, that one. So can you describe to me, I'm not entirely sure I understand the tax revenues here, what is the, I mean, we don't have any, I get that, but why do these three other regional airports have them? I know that they're not affiliated with the University of Illinois, but how are they generating that revenue?
So, the Bloomington Airport, Springfield Airport, Pierre Airport, and also Quad Cities Moline, that's not on this because they're far enough away from us, we don't really see them as direct competition. We do compete with them as far as gathering airline resources, but as far as direct competition economically or for passengers, they don't compete with us, so we didn't put them on here. They all operate under Illinois statute as an airport authority, and that statute gives them the right to levy property tax. And they bring in, well, more than half in some cases, portion of their operating revenue through a property tax levy. That property tax affects most people at a term of about $35 to $60 a year, so it's not a lot per individual household, but as you can see, it makes a big difference as far as the revenue necessary to operate an airport. Operating airports is an expensive thing, it's by no means a cheap proposition, and so it gives them an advantage over us that we just don't have.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ammons.
Gene, could you also share, you said the airport authority equals a property tax something, I didn't get the last.
So in these other communities, not this community, but in those other communities, they operate based on a property tax, and depending on which community you're talking about, at the rate that they're allowed to collect, that equates to about $35 to $60 a year per household, so it's not a huge impact. But as you can see by this graph, it makes a huge impact as far as the revenue that they have to be able to operate their airport, and it challenges us in the fact that we have to operate without that.
Okay, and you said there were grants and stuff that you depend on the university, are you eligible to share how much that is, that you guys get from?
The university helps subsidize the airport through both in-kind services and through financial money that they provide. That varies depending on, from year to year, it's been as much as about a half a million down to about $300,000, so it varies, but the university is fully behind supporting the airport, it's just challenging because, again, we don't have the same resources other communities have. And when I say communities, I mean you, Urbana, Champaign, this community, you're competing with them in so many different ways as far as this asset, and it's one of those things that we just don't have the same level playing field that those other communities have.
You said there, we have 480 jobs that Willard provides, that's mind-boggling to me from my trips out there.
Well, so that economic impact study shows that we have about probably 300 jobs actually on the airport, and then the estimates based on the multiplier effects shows that there's about another 200 jobs, so it's around 480, close to 500 jobs. The state's version of that looked at and got about 540 jobs. You look at Springfield, talking about competition, Springfield has the Air National Guard down there, which has about 900 direct employees, so their multiplier effect puts them out to almost 3,000 jobs. So airports have a huge impact as far as the number of people that are employed either directly or indirectly in the community. Flightstar is a huge corporation out at the airport that does a lot of work, they have almost 200 direct employees, and one of the things that they do is every night, work on the American Airlines flights. So they bring in a huge amount of value, again, to the community on a whole as far as jobs and economic impact.
And you're saying, what percentage of those jobs are Champaign County?
As far as we know, most of them, almost all of them are in Champaign County.
And do you have a, do you do a breakdown of your gender and ethnicity as far as your employees there?
As far as my employees, I only have about 22 direct employees, so that's fairly easy enough to do, and we keep track of that under the university's programs. As far as Flightstar and the other, the FAA, TSA, and all the other employees that are out there, that's up to those individual groups to do those type of breakdowns.
So you don't have any sort of way to partner with them on those to create an environment of inclusion type of thing? And I'm not, I don't have any numbers from anybody else, I was just asking because what I asked everybody.
Yeah, we do focus in as best we can having an inclusive and diverse employment group, and we try to do our best, especially under the university standards that we have, which are very open and inclusive. We also, as the airport, our own employees, we operate under the civil service program for the state, which is, you know, has a different level of responsibility as well. With Flightstar, they're a private company, we can work with them and partner with them, and they do have a very diverse workforce out there, but we can't directly tell them who they can and can't hire, or what they can and can't do as far as hiring practices. And then, the FAA and the TSA, which are our next biggest employers besides the airlines, they have their own government standards from the federal government that they work under.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Jacobson.
So I don't know how widespread this is, but I can tell you that, an anecdote within the past year of seeking to fly out of Willard to the east coast and seeing a $700 ticket, and the same ticket to go through Chicago from Bloomington was $300. And all the rest of the itinerary was exactly the same. So I don't know how those things arise.
Well, I think, I do remember hearing something, you may have sent us an email or somebody else may have sent us an email, and we actually looked into that particular instance, and it was unfortunate that in that particular instance, well, it wasn't unfortunate for whoever bought the ticket, it was unfortunate for us, that in that particular instance, United, I believe it was a United or American flight, were having kind of a pricing competition with Delta, and Delta is in Bloomington where they're not here, and that drove some prices down in that region, and it was a very temporary type of thing. Just today, as I was preparing for this, I priced out a couple of flights as if I was fictitiously going to visit my parents, and flying out of Champaign was only $35 more than driving up to Chicago and flying out of Chicago to visit my parents. So on the average, you're gonna find that most of the time you book flights, your prices are gonna be well worth the cost that it would take you to drive anywhere else. There will be those times when the ticket prices are higher, and we understand that that happens. The only thing we ask is that as often as you're gonna fly anywhere, you at least check and try to make sure that this is your best option. Because again, like I said, I priced out some tickets to go visit my parents, and it was $35 difference. So for $35, I'll stay here and not have to drive and deal with the traffic or the parking up in Chicago.
Oh, yeah, and okay, well, actually, I'm glad to hear the explanation about the price competition with Delta out of Bloomington, and that makes it seem more rational.
Well, and that's not a regular occurrence, that only happens occasionally, and you know, we've actually seen a decent price, I don't want to say price drop, but the price has been drifting downward with the United and American competition out of here, so it helps that we have both airlines now.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I've definitely noticed that the last three times I've flown has been from Champaign, and I didn't always do that, but I compared prices and it was $150 or less more, or less, yeah, $150 or less more than going to Chicago.
Yeah.
And it's definitely worth it for $150, especially if you have to stay an extra night or something to leave early in the morning. So, but I did, I was pricing some, and I noticed for longer trips sometimes, I mean, I think you can get just a round trip from here to Chicago for $250 or sometimes $170, something like that. But sometimes on longer trips, it'll be like $500 to get to Paris, or $900 if you fly, or $1,200 if you go from Champaign, so it'd be, you know, much more than even if you bought a separate round trip. So I wonder if that's a function of the particular travel search you're using, or if there's something that isn't being communicated.
Yeah, unfortunately, and I know all of you know this, so it's silly of me to repeat it, but I can't control the airline prices, so I can just try to watch them as closely as possible, but sometimes they make no sense. And you are perfectly right, that sometimes you'll look at a trip and it's $500 round trip, and you'll look at it a week later and it's $1,200. And sometimes it makes no sense. A lot of that has to do with the timeframe, the popularity of the flight, how many seats they have left on a particular flight. So we do ask you, again, the first thing we always ask is try to check it and see if it works for you, we understand if sometimes it doesn't. But also check that flexibility, because sometimes if you can go a week before, it'll be better than if you go a week later. Sometimes I think the airlines price flight tickets with voodoo magic instead of any other logic, but I don't really know how it works.
I think my point is that this was for the exact same day, the exact same airline, but by taking a separate round trip flight to Chicago and booking it separately, I could save $400 to get to Paris. So it seems like if that's the case, and people need to know that they should do that, and not just say, "I'm going from Champaign to Paris," look at pricing it out separately.
Yeah.
I don't know why it would work like that, it seems like if the same airline is willing to sell you two tickets for $600, why would they want to sell you one ticket for $1,000?
Yeah, sometimes that does work better. Technically, I'm not supposed to tell people they can do that, but yeah, you can do that and sometimes get a much better deal.
Mr. Roberts.
Does the airport benefit from airlines landing? Is there like a landing fee that you benefit from and pick up to support the activities at the airport?
Yeah, when you look at this chart that's on the screen right now, and you show that we do bring in about $2.4 million a year in revenue, that is fees to the airlines, that is landing fees that the airlines pay, it's fees that they pay for their space that they rent. It's also fees that Flightstar pays for the business that they operate, it's rental car concessions, it is our parking lot fees, there's a lot of different things that go into that, and so we are trying to attempt to raise revenue as much as possible, but it is, again, one of the biggest challenges that we have.
Any other questions for this gentleman? I guess not.
All right, well, if you guys have anything you want to discuss with me, I'm always available out at the airport or via email. I know most of your staff know how to get ahold of me, and the mayor knows how to get ahold of me, so please always let me know if you have any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for making it better.
Thank you.
I have one more public input card that came in a little late here. Mr. Allen Max Axelrod would like us to note that the graduate employees, organization local 6300 at the University of Illinois, Urbana-Champaign, won their strike on March 9th, 2018, and they seek a resolution of continued support by the City of Urbana. And it looks like I've got one more. Eldress Melinda Carr, continued concerns about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues, equity and historic impact. Just wishes for me to read this and not to speak at this time. Okay, I think then we're gonna move on to the staff reports. Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Covering some of the things I have in this report. Roanoke Concrete was issued a building permit for a new $2 million project, and that's actually the first significant investment on Lincoln Avenue after the reconstruction of that corridor. Some other projects that are going out, the RFP for 200 South Vine was issued on March 8th, the submission date for that is April 16th. That RFP was done in collaboration with David Michael That RFP was done in collaboration with David Michael Moore. He did the design, and it's putting a very good design onto Urbana, focusing on some of the change and development we've seen. The email campaign and CoStar listing are both seeing high interest from developers and other parties. Our Rentals has entered into a contract to buy the city-owned thirteen oh one East Washington. They have a hundred and twenty days to complete due diligence. Their potential plan is to demolish the current building and build a new multi-tenant space. Success of the Business and Development Luncheon continued to grow. The last luncheon had over eighty attendees. It was held at Broadway Food Hall. Speakers spoke positively on the current and future changes in Urbana that was both downtown and more broadly. A video of the event is available online on the city's YouTube channel. For the Think Urbana marketing campaign, the Google campaign, which followed IP addresses for the Think Urbana, that concluded in last month, and the site averaged twenty-one visitors per day while it was running. Currently, CUNTD donated exterior space for ten signs, and that's going to be on the back, so you will see some Think Urbana marketing signs on the back of buses during March. Right now, staff are completing a video testimonial from users of the Think Urbana program. Once that's completed, we will be starting next April, a three-month campaign on Facebook that will target different IP addresses there. Also for Think Urbana, next Tuesday, the twentieth, at eight thirty, the city is sponsoring and is a speaker for the Home Builders Association of East Central Illinois Coffee with the Builder Event. That's going to be at Broadway Food Hall at eight thirty. Some other events that are coming up, March seventeenth, that's the Saturday from four to six P.M., the Urbana Business Association will have the World Shortest St. Patrick's Day Parade at Shipyard. On April fourteenth, from one to five, will be Urbana Celebrates the Boneyard with many different family, family events. Also, for the Think Urbana campaign, on April nineteenth, from three to six, we will have our first Realtor Tour, and that will be covering Urbana for different age groups, including, or categories, double income, no kids, families, and empty nesters. And we have some food already lined up being provided from Spark Cafe, as well as Broadway Food Hall. Any questions? Yes.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, I just wanted, you mentioned that we're going to have the shortest St. Patrick's Day Parade in the world, probably, or next to. And I just wanted to point out that I believe it starts at five o'clock, and it's going to start at Broadway and Main Street.
Yes.
It's not going to start at the Shipyard.
Yes, I believe they have a pre-party at four, and then an after-party as well at Shipyard, I apologize.
So bring green and march for a block.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? Guess not. Okay, is it Bryant's turn? Assistant Chief of Police Bryant Seraphin's going to come up and speak with us on a specific topic. I believe it is how schools are training to respond to active shooters. I'm going to, as the chair, I'm going to respectfully ask that we stay on topic with this, is a very heated and emotional issue, obviously, for everyone. So let's just try to stay focused on what his specific presentation is about. Mr. Seraphin?
Thank you. All right, well, good evening. About a month ago, another in a long series of school shootings occurred in Parkland, Florida, and I fielded a few questions about that. And so we decided that maybe I should come and kind of give a little bit of a chat, if you will, hopefully in five minutes or so, to kind of generally go over what the Urbana schools do with regards to some of their active shooter training. I guess it would be remiss if I didn't at least sort of give a slight bit of history, because things evolve and things change in law enforcement and in schools' responses to these types of events. I had been here five whole years and was new on the SWAT team when Columbine happened in nineteen ninety-nine. And that was sort of a watershed moment for law enforcement. In that, sort of the tactics of the day, which was to surround the school, call and wait, and call out the SWAT team, wasn't no longer an option. Time is one of the biggest factors when we consider school shootings and the carnage and destruction that they cause. So law enforcement decided, we can't do this anymore. We are now going to develop certain techniques and train our officers at the patrol officer level. That very first responder, not the SWAT guys who are maybe home and in bed, but those first patrol officers, how to react to this and how to enter the school. And so that changed shortly thereafter. Unfortunately, some of these things continued, and up through Virginia Tech and NIU, just up the street here in DeKalb, and then Sandy Hook. And there was another shift, not just for law enforcement, who made this sort of initial shift in tactics. Now, instead of sort of locking down the schools and waiting for the police to come, we have empowered the schools, the staff, the students, to take some ownership in how this event will play out. And specifically, and I know you have all heard this, the term run, hide, fight, sort of became, came out of this sort of shift. In addition to Alice, which I believe is another program, and I can't remember that all the time, so I have to look it up, which is alert, lock down, inform, counter, and evacuate. I like run, hide, fight. But essentially, it's sort of the same kind of concept, which is to say, instead of just locking in a room and waiting, we are now going to have you either run, hide, or fight, depending on the scenario. That most recently occurred, and probably that shift in about two thousand twelve, thirteen, I know that the Alice instructors came into town, and there was, they dealt with the school district. And they would train. We would help them and guide them, but it is the schools, sort of their plan. Currently, we do, and there's a state statute, that the schools have to do so many school safety drills. They do tornado drills, fire drills, bus evacuation drills, and they do law enforcement armed intruder drill. We work with them every year to try to line up all the schools. We will reach out. We attempt to always do this in the fall, so it's fresh in the minds of the students and the teachers as we proceed through the school year. But then we will pick a couple of days and try to hit all the schools. We do have to coordinate with them, we just can't surprise them, so that we don't show up on the day that they're at the Museum of Science and Industry. But so we will coordinate our efforts with them, and then we will go and conduct these drills at every school in Urbana. The other thing, a couple of the things I wanted to mention with regards to these drills, in addition to that, there's usually a law enforcement person, whether it's a command staff or the school resource officer, who will show up at the beginning of each school year. The school usually has a few sort of admin days at the front end where they will have us come, and we can review these principals with the principals. And we also will sometimes have principals who maybe aren't as confident, they're newer. They had to change, a lot of changeover in staff. And so sometimes we'll go out and even work with them on an individual school basis as opposed to an entire, the annual drills. In addition, we also do, we will help them separate and distinct even from this, with regards to general school security, we will do perimeter checks at the school, which is not very complex. It's simply walking around the school, tugging on the doors, seeing if you can get in. And the idea is that we try to make sure that they are, they're taking just the basic, most basic steps with regards to keeping the doors locked. And if a door's propped open, or for some reason is overlooked because the bread delivery truck is there, when we would enter, I've gotten a chance to do this, am I at least, not necessarily challenged, but am I at least approached and does someone make an inquiry? Hi, sir, can we help you? That's all you have to do to win the little game. They don't have to do, they don't have to do anything amazing, just are we paying attention as school staff? So we work with Don Owen and the school district. I know he had, originally had some plans to be here tonight. He and I have worked several events and cases over the years, so, and I guess I'll just close with that, which is to say that the school district and the police department coordinate on these things, and we have to. And I think we do a pretty good job of that. So I guess I will take any questions that you guys have.
Any questions? Mary Allison?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to thank you. I know I was one of the first people who came and asked you about this, so thank you very much for coming tonight and giving us an update.
You're welcome.
Anybody else? Guess you got off easy. And we have more staff, oh, I'm sorry.
I do have a very quick, I think it's a quick question. Is there comparable planning at the university?
Yes.
Okay.
They have, one of their lieutenants, his entire job is event planning like this with regards to natural events, tornadoes and whatnot. And I can't remember, they have hundreds of buildings on the campus.
Sure.
And trying to continue to build emergency response plans for all of those. But yes, the university does.
Okay, thank you, sir. I think we have more staff reports.
Yes, good evening. I'm just here to give you an update regarding the consolidated social service funding process, continuing from what Danielle had spoke about at the Cunningham Township Board meeting. In fact, last Wednesday, we met to continue discussing the process. So we have come up with a anticipated timeline, and the applications would become available March twenty-sixth, and that we would have a workshop on the twenty-ninth at three o'clock. And we will also have it recorded, so agencies that are unable to make it will also be able to see the presentation. Applications would then become due April twenty-sixth. And then we will start reviewing and discussing the applications right after that, and then make recommendations to council. And this would continue into May, and then passing in June with the budget. And then in July, staff would work on dividing up the grants and discussion regarding site visit targets and structure, because we will be doing site visits or monitoring with everyone who gets funded. So that's the anticipated timeline. And of course, we already talked about the changes to the process that Danielle had brought up. And then regarding the guiding principles, we reviewed the ones that were adopted back in two thousand thirteen, and per council goals for two thousand eighteen, two thousand twenty-one, we took the ones that seemed to involve social services, not-for-profits in some way, and added them to this, the goals are the guiding principles, which would be eliminate housing discrimination on racial or ethnic grounds, invest more heavily in social services, starting with detox center, promote paths to employment for at-risk youth, and work with other governmental agencies on family-focused transitional affordable housing. If that, if you're in agreement, we can continue and we can make sure to add those. If there's anything else, please let us know, and we can certainly email you to see if there's anything else that you would like added. We are also requiring reporting quarterly, annually, performance measures, client financial reporting, monitoring or site visits for all agencies funded. And we are also working on standard operating procedures for the scoring of the applications based on need and capacity. And concerningly, if you're interested, we can send those. Right now, they're in rough draft, and we're waiting to hear back comments from Danielle on her thoughts, and we can email this out if you would like to see this. Also have a scoring tool we're looking at. And then far as reporting form, adding client data for race, ethnicity, income, gender, that information. And then an annual report that will be based on a narrative, the guiding principles, financial summary, and service data that will be required and will be presented to council as well. So that's our update. I believe we have another date that we're going to come back and give more information. But with that, if there's any questions, and like I said, we'll send out information.
I think Mr. Ammons had a question?
No, that's okay.
Okay, then Mayor Marlin had something?
Yes, I had an announcement and then a housekeeping item. I just wanted to let people know that on Tuesday, March twentieth, that's a week from tomorrow, from six to seven thirty P.M., there's going to be a moderated community forum for the four finalists for the city administrator position here in Urbana. The public is invited to attend. It's at seventeen oh one East Main Street. You can submit questions online starting tomorrow via the city's website. At the forum, each candidate will give a brief introductory remarks, and then they'll be available to answer questions submitted by the public. The finalists are John Burt from Groton, Connecticut, Elizabeth Hannan from Urbana, Illinois, Angel Jones from Gaithersburg, Maryland, and Carol Mitten from Washington, D.C. If you can't attend, and it's a very busy day because it is primary election day, the forum is going to be streamed via UPTV, Channel Six. It'll be broadcast live, and it's also going to be recorded for later viewing on Channel Six. And we'll probably do Facebook Live and have a live Twitter feed from the event as well. So it'll be well-covered and also available, again, for viewing later, particularly, I know some people are going to be out of town next week. So again, Tuesday, March twentieth, six to seven thirty P.M., and it'll be finished in time for you to go wait for election results a couple blocks away at Brooklyn Center.
Mr. Ammons?
Yes, the names again, you said John Burt?
Yes, they were emailed out. John Burt, Elizabeth Hannan, Angel Jones, and Carol Mitten.
And sometimes I ask for those things, the public didn't get an email, so like for them to...
There will be, there also will be a press release going out tomorrow with these details. And this is coming at the end of two full days of interviews with staff and city council members during the day, and tours of the community.
So the, the date, just somewhat troublesome for me to, that we would choose that particular date after all the time we've been working on this, that we could have chosen another date possibly?
Well, we, we, we understand that, but when you have four people with very, very busy schedules, between travel and work, and the nine months that we have been working on this, this, it basically ended up, this was the week that the four candidates were all available at the same time. So we pretty much had no choice but to go this. So that's why we're doing everything we can to share, share the public forum and make it available for people to access it in different ways.
That's all I have.
Okay, any other questions?
I did have a housekeeping item. So back to the agenda, the next three ordinances, two vacating in Alley Street and sale of real estate, all require six votes to pass when they go to city council. And I just learned of a travel schedule for next week for city council members, and we will not have six people in attendance next week. So when you, if you, when you move these ordinances out of committee, we plan on holding a special council meeting on March twenty-sixth before the regularly scheduled committee of the whole meeting. So your motion would, would reflect that. You'll be moving it to the special council meeting on March twenty-sixth for each of these items, and I'm assuming everyone's going to be back by then.
So scratch April second, it's March twenty-sixth?
Yeah. Plan B.
Plan B. Very good. Anything else before we move on? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I'll just give a brief report on, I was gone last week from, missed this meeting because I was in Washington, D.C. at a bicycle summit, National Bicycle Summit, and it was also a lobby day. So it was meetings and typical conference kind of meetings where you learn more about what other areas are doing and promoting, and bicycle safety and infrastructure. And then on Thursday, on Wednesday, we actually went to the legislatures. And Illinois had about six or seven of us there, so we divided up into two teams and got to most of the congressional districts. The only actual legislator that poked his head in when we were there was Rodney Davis, so we got to talk to him. He's actually a co-sponsor on one of the bicycle bills that... He's actually a co-sponsor on one of the bicycle bills that we were advocating for. He also says he wants to ride on the railroad trail and would appreciate borrowing a bike and helmet from someone. So we're looking forward to that. But some of the things that we were advocating for involves the infrastructure spending in general. And Secretary of Transportation Cho was one of our keynote addresses, speakers. And another one was actually a very interesting speaker, one of the co-founders of New Belgium Brewing, one that does fat tire, fat tire ale, or fat tire whatever it is, plus several others. And they're just a really socially responsible brewing company that has reinvested in, in bicycle advocacy as well as a lot of other causes that they're interested in donating millions of dollars a year. For the past six years, the company has been 100% employee-owned, so it was really interesting hearing from her too. But as far as the transportation funding goes, we also sat in for about 20 minutes on the Transportation and Infrastructure Subcommittee during a fairly interesting time when some people were there from both the Chamber of Commerce and a trucking organization testifying how the gas tax needs to be raised because it hasn't been raised since 1993. It's like 18 cents a gallon. And it's something that the president has actually supported, talking to other people, but Representative Ryan says it doesn't have a chance or isn't going to be, isn't going to happen in the House this year. So, as far as funding the president's plan where he proposed shifting most of the tiger money, all the tiger money and a lot of the transit money to, to an infrastructure plan that would then require 80% match, I don't think there was really much thought that that was going to go anywhere from anyone, from either Republicans or Democrats that we talked to. Although, there was some interest in trying to, to do something this year. There's still a couple of years left on the current bill. And there is also seems to be agreement that that will, there will be increased funding for that this year, so that was a positive. Couple of other things we, we tried to talk about was the tiger program. That's what's funding the IMCOR project. It's a kind of a multi-jurisdictional competitive grant program that is hard to get money for, like for the IMCOR project where it involves Champaign University in Urbana and the MTD, where it cuts across jurisdictions, sometimes it's hard to get people to cooperate on that. So, tiger program's been pretty effective in encouraging that sort of, that sort of cooperation. Also, since it's competitive, results in a fairly good value for the federal government because our match is well over 50% by the time you figure out what else we put into it. So that's a high match comparatively to what most federal funding programs are. So, that, we were advocating for that to continue in some way. That was actually a stimulus program and, but I think, looking at the good aspects of what that's doing, was, was pretty well received with most of the people we talked to too. Transportation investment in general, we were advocating for because good roads are also good roads to bike on. So, the better our roads are, the better the biking is. And then, one particular bill, it's a low-cost bill, HR 4241, it's been proposed in the House and that's the one that is actually being co-sponsored by Mr. Davis as well as a couple of Democrats. Lipinski and SD from Connecticut was the main sponsor. But that would just take some administrative money that DOT already has and direct it toward acquiring and sharing data in a pilot program with five states and 10 metropolitan areas, including six small metropolitan planning organizations like, like we have RPC. And that, the determination who that would be, would be a non-political process, but theoretically non-political, it's non-political that it can be, I guess. But in this pilot program, the data sharing would be targeted more to make specific connections between origin and destination. So it's the kind of data that you don't readily have just from traffic counts on streets. You have how people actually use the streets, where they're going, not only from home to work, but also home to shopping. That data's out there, it's mostly commercially available. And this pilot program, we just used DOT administrative funds to, to share that with specific planning organizations to see what they can do with it. And one of the things I think that the bicycle and pedestrian community felt that would help us with is that we feel that investment in bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure is really cost-effective because for a small investment, you can make a lot of connections. And so I think we would come out well in that sort of improving efficiency basically of use of transportation funding to make better connections. So that's kind of overview. If anybody has any specific questions, you can always ask me. And I'll be back in a month or two to give an annual report for the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee too.
Mr. Jacobs?
Just a quick question comment, I guess. It sounds from what you've said, as though support for facilitating bicycles is, is pretty much nonpartisan or bipartisan. Is that, am I getting the right impression from what you said?
It seems like it, I mean, the people we've talked to, of course, when they talk to you, they won't say no too much. But there were a lot of people that didn't return our calls. We didn't get to meet with Schimpkes and that's where most of the, most of the Kickapoo Railroad Trail is in the Schimpkes District. His office didn't return calls. So, you know, it may not be completely accurate, but there's definitely, definitely Republican, Democrat support for bicycle infrastructure. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Guess we'll be moving on to our ordinances if there's nothing else. Up next is ordinance number 2018-03-020. An ordinance, Vacating an Alley, North Alley of Water Street between Lynn Street and Cottage Grove Avenue, Public Works.
Thank you, I'm Brad Bennett, Assistant City Engineer. Appreciate being able to present to you this evening. What will bring me for you is an ordinance to vacate a existing non-functional alley that's north of Water Street between Lynn and Cottage Grove. The residents had petitioned us for this vacation. As I mentioned, it's non-functional, there is no pavement back there. It really, if you go back and look at the area, it appears just to be part of people's backyards. There are some overhead utilities back there as far as overhead electric, cable, and telephone. As part of our standard procedure, we reached out to other utilities and departments within the city to see if there were any concerns or objections in vacating that right-of-way and we received none. We will preserve an easement for the entire 12-foot width of the right-of-way back there for the overhead utilities. The city at this time doesn't foresee any use of that particular alley for pedestrian, bicycle, or any vehicular access. And I know there were some, some concerns about how that might potentially impact the Kickapoo Railroad Trail, so if you'll bear with me, I'll just blow it up. And this might be a little hard to see, see if I can blow this up a little bit. Or zoom in a little bit. But this is a parcel map of the area, so you can see the 900 block of, of East Water Street. That alley is right here. And it is right adjacent to the railroad track. That would be the potential Kickapoo Railroad Trail up here. This is where the railroad track is. Have the aerial photography turned off because it's kind of hard to see the property lines with aerial photography on. But you see, this is kind of a remnant, so there, there really is nothing to the west of Lynn Street, all the way over to Maple, that would allow, you know, any sort of trail connection through there. And there is a little piece of alley right-of-way here in that 1,000 block of, of East Water Street. But when you get east of here, all the way out to Smith Road, there's no alley right-of-way that could be used for any sort of trail purposes. So, and my understanding is the, the way that the Kickapoo Railroad Trail would work would be the abandonment or some, you know, agreement with the railroad to allow the use of this railroad right-of-way, which would be plenty wide enough to, you know, provide the, the multi-use path connection through there. So, it's the recommending, a recommendation of the, the Engineering Division to approve the vacation of the alley, which would then go to all those properties south of the railroad track that are adjacent to that alley. With that, I'll open it up to any questions.
Mr. Roberts?
Yeah, yeah, so I had brought up the question, and I appreciate Brad, you're addressing it, about, you know, had anyone from the Bike Pedestrian, Pedestrian, BPAC Committee or anybody else even considered whether it was wise to vacate these alleys if they could possibly be used for connectivity in the, in the community east-west? Realizing, of course, that the railroad trail is a major thing where, where a rail line is abandoned or vacated by the owners of the rail and then either covered over or the rails are removed and that becomes a wide and very useful biking path along the, you know, from one distance to another. And there is, of course, a desire to connect it eastward to the, the Kickapoo Railroad Trail that's going to go all the way to the state line in Indiana and of course, westward, you know, through Champaign. And, you know, I, I saw this property as possibly being of some value should that trail ever be created. So that's why I asked it. And I haven't heard from anybody who represents BPAC about whether they've actually considered that or not as being useful to them. It looked to me, and I walked, I walked behind along the track, that yes, certain places, there was fencing that people had kind of already opted into the easement on their own volition. And certainly some of the backyards are filled with trees that have grown up spontaneously without being, you know, trimmed for 25 years. But yeah, so I see that, but I did wonder about some properties that claim to be private property right up against the railroad track. And I was, I guess I was a little surprised that the alley didn't continue really completely through the back of all these properties along the Water Street backyards. So anyway, I brought it up, I thought it was an important thing to, before we vacate something, to evaluate whether we should be doing that. Based on, you know, historical events where the Wabash Line ran from Myra Ridge, or the Myra Station to the Wabash Depot in downtown Urbana, was abandoned and vacated to the property owners after some consideration of whether it could have been a bike trail and pathway. Had that, had, had that been allowed, we would have a tremendous connectivity between the downtown and South Philo Road and other parts of the community. But at the time, there was objection by neighbors, there was not enough will to do that. And we lost an opportunity to have a very excellent bike trail in the city. So I just didn't want to repeat that error again. So apparently it's not that much connectivity, so I don't know, maybe somebody else can comment about whether... I don't see how this benefits the property owners in particular to have 12 more feet of, of nothing at the backyard, but does it add to the value of the property, of a property?
I mean, that would be a question for the assessor. I can't imagine, since it's adding just a little bit of property, that would add much value, you know, increase their property tax kind of thing. You know, probably the real value to the, the property owners back there is just that, you know, they don't have the restrictions placed on them for that portion of the alley. Some of them have garages or sheds or stuff that actually come right up to the edge of the alley or possibly encroach into it. So by vacating it, you know, you are fixing some of their issues. I know in particular, there's a property here on Cottage Grove that they want to be able to, here at the end of Cottage Grove, that they want to be able to park their mobile home in the alley portion of it. And they can't do that when it's an alley because by definition, alley has to be open for the public to be used. So, you know, that would facilitate a, a need that that particular property has. So I, I think that's why the residents requested it.
Oh, so that was probably the initiating reason why they...
Yeah, but I'll point out that all of the property owners in that block did sign the petition supporting the vacation of the alley.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I thought about that too, whether that would be useful at all. Looking at each side where, you know, the property lines already go back to the railroad right-of-way and there's no alley, although there is, I didn't notice that there was a stretch further down. But it's hard to imagine that you could put a multi-use path in 12 feet if, you know, assuming you weren't able to use railroad property. Even if it's an eight-foot wide multi-use path, it's going to be hard to squeeze it into a 12-foot wide.
Yeah, there are utility poles within that existing right-of-way too.
Yeah. So it's hard for me to imagine how it would be useful by itself, although it's also, I think, illustrates why we really need to figure out long-term what the plan is to try to get the trail through there, whether we can do it with, with rail or not. And if they're using all those rails or if they're, you know, if they're planning on abandoning one of those. And I just haven't seen, if there's been information out there or, or studies on that, I haven't seen it. So, it might be good to at least kind of take inventory of what we know and what we don't know and, and see what we need to know to make it happen at some point in the future. But I, is kind of, in addition to that, just in general, I know I've saw in this one and in the next one, I think too, that where it's the policy for the city to abandon the right-of-way without cost to neighboring residential properties.
Correct.
Could, would it be possible to send us that policy? I, I haven't seen that, is it an ordinance or is it, it's just an internal policy?
It's, it's an ordinance, we can share that with you.
Okay, if it's an ordinance, I could probably find it if it's in the code, but yeah, that'd be good to know. It, it just seems a little inconsistent because I know we abandoned a right-of-way for St. Patrick's Church. And even though that isn't residential now, it was before they tore the apartments down. So, they actually had to pay us for that. And you'd think that if they could have got it for free by asking for it while their apartments were still on it, they would have done that and then, and then torn them down. So I don't know, I'd just be interested in seeing how that's worded.
Any other comments? Jared, Mr. Miller?
I'll make a motion, if the chair allow it.
Absolutely.
I'm going to move ordinance number 2018-03-020. An ordinance, Vacating an Alley, North Alley of Water Street between Lynn Street and Cottage Grove Avenue, forward to the special council meeting on the 26th with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Okay, motioned by Mr. Miller and second by Mr. Ammons. And we can move on to our next one, right? Oh, yeah, that would help. Not enough coffee. Okay. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody in opposition? The ayes have it. Okay?
Okay, the next item we have for your review is the right-of-way vacation of West Church Street at the intersection of North Lincoln Avenue. If you remember back from, from last week, you approved a comprehensive plan change and re-zoned this particular site. The properties consist of 910, 908, 906, West Church Street, and 701 North Lincoln Avenue are the properties that are adjacent to this right-of-way. It's the former Illinois American Water Treatment Plant Site that's being proposed to be redeveloped into 26 townhomes with 126 housing units. The main access or entrance is going to be off that west leg of Church Street at Lincoln Avenue. So the vacation will, of that particular street stub will provide the main entrance to this new development. It is a kind of a functional alley or street stub. It's not a, a full street through there. The developer will be providing a eight-foot wide multi-use path within the existing right-of-way to facilitate pedestrian and bicycle connectivity through that corridor. They will only be constructing the portion of the eight-foot wide multi-use path for the vacated portion. The city will retain the right-of-way to the west and will be responsible for at some point in the future continuing the multi-use path to the west. So, we did, as our standard procedure, reach out to the utilities and other city departments concerning the right-of-way vacation. We got no objections to the vacation. There are a number of utilities within that existing right-of-way that include underground, electric, gas, telecommunications, water, street lighting... electric, gas, telecommunications, water, street lighting, and sewer, and will be providing an easement for those utilities as part of the right-of-way vacation. There'll also be an easement for that multi-use path that's included as part of the right-of-way vacation. So there would be no cost for vacating the right-of-way. They would be vacated to the residential properties to the north, because that's where the, where that right-of-way was carved out of during the subdivision of the, for those And that kind of concludes the presentation I have. I'll open it up if there's any questions or concerns regarding it.
Any questions on that? Mary Alice Wu.
I'm curious, so do they currently, the, the developers, do they currently own all this land? Or is they only under contract?
Well, we do have a representative here from tonight that I'll have come up and, and answer that for you.
Thank you.
Andrew Costa?
Costas.
Costas.
Mayor and Council, Andrew Costas, from Landmark Properties. We're currently under contract for all of the land that will comprise our development site.
Okay, so procedurally, if something unforeseen happens, and you don't go through with it, what happens to something that we vacated to an organization that doesn't own the land?
Well, it would go to those properties to the north that it was carved out of, so those properties are the ones that's actually being vacated to, not the land development company.
Got it, got it. Okay, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Anybody else? Bill Brown.
Yeah, I, I'd like the, the development that's been planned. I know, I, I got a chance to watch the meeting last week, and I know there was concern about affordability and everything, but I think everyone realizes that for affordable housing, it takes a big government subsidy, and that's not what we're doing here, so appreciate the quality housing that's going to be built. I do wonder, I see in the whereas, it says the owners have agreed to construct a paved eight-foot-wide shared-use path, but there's nothing in the sections after the resolve that says they're going to do it. So I wonder if having the whereas says that they've agreed to construct one, that doesn't really require them to construct one, so I wonder if there, there should be a requirement in there. And then the other question about the easement, I see the city has perpetual easement, perpetual easement to maintain the path. Does that also imply that the public has a perpetual easement to use the path? I guess those are legal questions.
Well, I was looking at the ordinance. Could you articulate it again, please?
Just repeat my question, is that?
Yes.
Okay. So, as far as getting the path built, the multi-use path, in the part that we're vacating, there's a whereas, it says the owners have agreed to construct a paved eight-foot-wide shared-use path upon a portion of the vacated right-of-way to facilitate pedestrian and bicycle travel along the West Church Street corridor between North Harvey and North Lincoln.
Yes.
So that's mentioned there, that they intend to do that, but there's nothing in the, therefore be it resolves, that says they're required to do that.
We could put that in there, however, if part of their plan provides for it. I, I don't know if you've entered into an agreement of any kind, you know, construction agreement of any kind, to construct the path. That's referenced in the whereas here.
I don't believe we, we have at this point. We, we intend to construct the path.
Obviously, the ordinance does not require them to do it as stated, to do what's stated in the whereas. It's a commitment on the part of the owners, obviously, or the to-be owners.
So is there enforcement action if, if they were to not do it? I know they plan to, but just trying to be due diligence.
There would be, based on this, there would be no enforcement, no ability to enforce.
Okay.
It's just a, the whereas is just a recognition of their intent. It is not binding. Only the, now therefore be it ordained is what's binding.
So would you recommend that something be added to the ordained part to require them to build one?
Well, I, I think I would, I think we would want to talk with Lori, as well as Brad, about that, and that can be included. We can, we can look at that before we bring this back to council for vote.
Okay, and then as far as the use of the path, is it guaranteed that it will be open to the public?
Depends on what the language is. If it's a private path, no. If it's ordained, if that's the route to go, that it be, you know, a, a public path, it would then become a right-of-way.
Okay.
And right now, it's being, the right-of-way is being vacated.
Okay, I just think we need to be clear what it is, and if, if it's not going to be public, we need to take that into consideration, but my assumption, from everything I've read, is that it's intended to be public, and that it will be built. But I just don't know if my assumption's good enough, based, you know, if that, if the language in the ordinance is, is enough to guarantee that.
Well, and I, I'm just looking through the, the Section 3, which has got the easement for the multi-use path, and it says it grants to the city of Urbana to operate, maintain, inspect, repair, reconstruct, remove, or replace. So I, I would say the operation of the multi-use path would allow pedestrian and bicycle access to it. As far as the commitment of the developer to build the path, remember, we're actually just vacating the right-of-way to the residential properties to the north, so they're not actually signatory to this, you know, there is no, this is not an agreement between us and the developer. This is, you know, just for the vacation of the, of the right-of-way, so they're, they're not really party or signature to... I don't know, Jim, if you want to comment on that?
As, you're referring to Section 3B.
Well, that was regarding the easement, but as far as the requirement for the construction of the path?
They're required to provide an, an easement, but the easement, it doesn't say that, in fact, it is going to be constructed as, or used as.
Well, so that's an interesting thing, because it does kind of, I mean, the connectivity between Lincoln and points to the west are, of course, concerned to us, and should the, they end up, you know, wanting to make it a, a gated entrance, I mean, that would certainly prohibit people from moving through it, even though they said that, you know, anybody who could get into it could be using it. So I don't know. I do feel somewhat concerned. We're, we're not talking about a, a PUD here, we're talking about giving property to individual landowners who still, at this time, own the land. I wonder if this, if this vacation should occur later, when the property is actually purchased.
The, the language provides that if they are to use, you know, as I said, it doesn't require them to create a path, but if they are, it's supposed to be for the enjoyment of the pub, the general public. So if they're going to build a, a path, it has to be available to the public, cannot be a private path.
I get that, but they don't necessarily, we don't know for sure they will. I mean, I, there's an intent, but...
That's the issue, that's the issue.
And if they decided that there was some reason that it didn't work out for their plan, I mean, plans can change, because we don't see any plans here.
Correct.
Any, any solid plans?
Mr. Brown.
I remember seeing a, a sketch-up of plans. I don't know how solid it was, but there, there were gates, but they were on either side of the path, I think. The path was kind of going through, and then the gates were into the, for cars going into the parking areas. I did notice that the path went to the north side of the intersection, and our crosswalk is actually on the south side of the intersection.
That is correct, but that's kind of just a preliminary concept.
Okay.
There would be a, obviously, as you got into the design phase, more of the specific locations, and radiuses, and widths, and clearances from things all have to be worked out and determined as part of the actual development plan.
So at some point, the engineering will at least have to approve a lot of stuff, right?
Yes.
So can this just be kind of the part of what engineering can consider when they're making the approvals of the parking lots, and drainage, and everything?
Yeah, so it'd be part of our site plan development review, and we would coordinate with the, with the developer and their engineer on, on getting that done.
Mr. Jacobson.
Is it a, within our power to grant, to grant, to vacate conditionally, based on the outline of the plans that we've seen so far, specifically that this be a, a public path? That one I'd have to research, you know, conditional, unless Bill has experience with the council doing that.
Yeah, let me suggest this, that we will add language in this ordinance that will make it contingent, that the vacation would occur, that the path is built at that time. So it'd be contention approval once the path is built, then the vacation would occur. So we'll, we'll look at some language and work with legal on that, and he'll address this issue.
And we'll review it for legal muster.
Okay, yeah, I, I would be very comfortable with that. Like other people on the council, I really liked what we saw, and we just want to be as sure as we can that that's what happens.
Thanks.
Anybody else? Mr. Ammons.
So the, I want to make sure I was clear about the question of the access for the public, then. That is what you're saying will be a part of the language as well?
Yeah, and that's already written in the ordinance, as is now, so it will be a public use.
It seemed to have been going back and forth, but...
No, the, that part is clear in the ordinance. The part that's not clear is the guarantee that the path will be built, and that, we will add that section to bolster this ordinance.
Well, I can support that, that's important.
Anybody else? Mr. Jacobson.
Well, I'm willing to move this towards the full council with the proviso that we will review the specific modifications discussed.
Special meeting?
At the special meeting on, on March 26th, or, yeah, March 26th.
Okay, so that was a motion to move it to March 26th with recommendations for what?
Well, that, that, a, a conditional recommendation for approval based on seeing the new language with respect to the public path.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Eric, and second by Bill. All in favor of that, say aye?
Aye.
Any in opposition? That holds. On to our next ordinance. Okay, last but certainly not least, ordinance number 2018-03-022, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 909 North Harvey Street, Community Development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The ordinance, as it says, it would allow the city to convey 909 North Harvey Street. In this case, it would be, we anticipate conveying it to Habitat for Humanity of Champagne County for development of new affordable homeownership opportunities on the site. Currently, 909 North Harvey Street is a vacant, grass-covered lot, residentially zoned, and it, it is a, a city-owned lot, and allowing us, allowing the Grants Management Division to convey that lot to Habitat for Humanity would allow for the Grants Management Division to complete the Acquisition, Demolition, Disposition Program with regards to this property, by which we acquire property, clear it, and eventually dispose of it to a community housing development organization, in this case Habitat for Humanity, so that they can redevelop it. And we really do prefer to think of this as a, a win-win for the city and for housing developers, because it, conveying this property would eliminate a $450 annual maintenance fee that the city pays to maintain the lot, while also helping to develop affordable housing and build the tax base at the same time. At the last Community Development Commission meeting on February 27th, the CDC voted unanimously to forward a recommendation for approval for this ordinance, and staff agrees with that recommendation, and I'm here to entertain any questions that the council might have.
Mr. Ammons.
I recommend that we move ordinance number 2018-03-022, an ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 909 North Harvey Street, to council with a recommendation for approval.
I'll second.
Okay, Mr. Clark.
Yeah, I'll point out that this one can actually go to the regular council meeting next week, assuming that five council members and the mayor are present. It's take six of eight of you for that one.
I plan to be here. Is anybody else?
I'm not here.
If, if there aren't enough, then you could, you could defer it at that meeting. Now, the other thing I would point out is that there's a small typo in Section 4. There's an extra "of" council where it says, and the mayor, six of eight votes, of council of the city, that "of council" needs to go away, so it's just a typo, but I'll fix.
Okay, so that was moved by Aaron, correct?
Yes.
And second by Mary Alice. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Any further business before we adjourn? Please say no. Meeting adjourned.